Meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals, October 7, 2019. The attendance will be recorded. Should all be here. Let's see. Approval of the signatures and minutes from September 9, 2019. Anybody have any changes, corrections, deletions, additions? I personally did not see any when I read over the first time. Anybody see any corrections or anything that need to be done? All right, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes of Monday, September 9, 2019, as presented.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of Monday, September 9, 2019.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion to accept the minutes of September 9. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes 5-0 to 0. Oh, you're gonna be like that, huh?
Mm-hmm.
That's Dan, huh?
Dan was on there.
Goodness.
Two days detention. You're going out.
Keep talking.
I've signed something, you're going out.
Thank you. Thanks. All right, seeing that it's close to 7:05, move right along to the first appointment. Petition number 905. Daniel and Karen Goom of 33 Bow Street. Are they here? Okay. Okay, the Halifax Zoning Board of Appeals. I got the right one? Yes. Will hold a public hearing on Monday, October 7, 2019, at 7:05 in meeting room number 1 of the Town Hall, 499 Plymouth Street in Halifax, Mass. on the application by Daniel and Karen Goom to reconstruct a garage to be located at 33 Bow Street, Halifax, Mass. Said property is owned by Daniel and Karen Goom of 33 Bow Street, Halifax, Mass., lot 02338, as shown on Assessors Map, 19, Lot 9928. Title reference book 23230, page 85. The applicant's project is in violation and constitutes a continuation of a non-conforming use, 167-8A, alteration, 167-8B, an extension of a non-conforming use, 167-8C, as well as in violation of the setback requirements, 167-11. The applicants are therefore seeking a special permit to change from two existing accessory buildings into one principal detached building, parentheses, garage, in variances from 167-12-F1, front setback from 50 feet to 32 feet, two rear setbacks from 40 feet to 21 feet, and three left side setbacks from 30 feet to one foot, a variance in accordance with 167-12-E8 as a deviation from 167-12-E7. Second and third sentences quoting "an accessory building or structure shall remain freestanding in perpetuity. Said accessory building or structure shall not by means of additional construction be attached to another building or to an existing building." Area is zoned residential business conservancy, petition number 905. Hi, how we doing?
Good, how are you?
Okay. Who's doing the construction on this?
I am.
Oh, you're doing it yourself?
Yes.
All right, why don't you just give us a brief breakdown what you want to do?
Brief breakdown. I had had a structure that has been there for 23 years.
What is it? What is the structure?
Structure is garage, breezeway with another attached shed. I actually have pictures here of what the existing structure is. This is what has been existing. Long story short, I had some winter damage. Some branches fall through the roof, rotted out the floor. I have another project going on, so in my mind, it was to build a structure around a structure in my free time because I couldn't do it all at once.
Oh, so this is just a shed that we're looking at?
This is what is existing right now. What do you mean?
And what's...
Why are you shaking your head, I'm sorry?
Wait, can you just talk to the board? That's what we're doing here. So what is in the shed? What's the shed being used for?
It's my lawnmower with a plow, my motorcycle, I have my... all my equipment in there. I'm a carpenter. I mean, I do estimating out of there.
Okay, I guess my question then is where is the main house, I guess, from here?
The main house is... The main house is right here.
Oh.
Yeah, so this is like a...
All right, that makes more sense. Okay, 'cause I was just trying to picture myself.
Right.
Okay.
My bad.
The street's not there, right?
What's that?
Says not constructed on the street, is that...
What's not constructed? Oh, the street.
Well, the street is a dirt road. It's a paper road. Long story short.
Are you at the end of Bow Street?
Correct.
Hold on a second, you'll get a chance. So, okay, it's a paper road then that separates the main house from the rest of the lot on the bend?
Correct. But I own all the lots on both sides. It's actually, what, 11 lots?
It's one of the what? I'm sorry?
It's 11 lots, broken up, that we own, all lots of the paper road.
Okay, so now, what are we doing to this, to the structure here? What do you want to do?
To the structure there? I made it into one. Basically, it has a jog in it. One section was smaller.
This jog here?
Yes. I straightened the structure out to make it all on one plane. I was getting rid of this to make it like a drive under for my truck to go there, and instead of this eyebrow dormer, I moved the dormer wall out so I would have more storage upstairs, is basically the...
Also, was the second floor on this also?
Correct. That's correct.
What's the second floor being used for, storage also?
Just woodshop, because all of my lawnmower and my rototiller and everything is downstairs. This last 10 feet is just a drive under, so upstairs is my woodshop, is, you know, where I do my woodshop.
Let me ask you, is it your private woodshop, or you do this commercially, or...
No, it's a little bit of both. I basically do it for myself, yes. I prefab stuff up there and... but everything now is 20 feet long, so I can't span it around in a 16-foot structure, so that's why the length of it is.
Anybody else have questions from the board to the applicants?
Is anything coming down?
Excuse me?
Is anything being torn down or rebuilt?
It is. It is. The existing structure, I built the structure around it because I couldn't do it all at once. So, in other words, I built like a wall...
So you built a garage around your sheds?
That's correct. I built a structure around the structure that is...
Oh, so this is existing now? The structure around the existing shed?
The start of it.
Yes, the start of it. Yes.
Okay.
Unfortunately, I didn't come up here and pull a permit ahead of time, and, you know, that's when, you know, you're putting the structure up around the structure. So it was a way for me to do it to keep it weather tight and hopefully, you know, do it a piece at a time.
So how it is in the pictures, is that your outside walls of the new structure?
The outside walls of the new structure? No, they're not in that picture.
This is the old?
They're shown on the plot plan. It's like...
But it's not in the pictures? That's before you started anything?
That's correct.
That's correct.
That was the existing, yes.
So building around, part of the shed is, looks like it's on another piece of property?
He said he did, but he didn't.
Is that...
Correct, originally it was, yes.
So the new structure...
So I had bumped it in.
Yeah.
So I bumped it in, and it obviously wasn't enough. I had land planning come down, and they said you could have bumped it in more to be on the property.
So that's a different measurements, I think it was...
There's a wall around the whole thing.
Right.
The old 46 and 1/2 feet, the new would be just under 40?
Yeah.
Because you've moved it in?
Yes.
Correct.
Yeah.
I moved it in thinking I was still, I was on my property, but in fact, I was still a foot or so on someone else's property, so my new proposal was to move it in an additional four feet to make sure it was on my property.
So this is the old building?
Correct.
What does the new building look like?
Draw a sketch right there.
Yes.
So... How big is the lot?
I don't get it.
You own 11...
I'm not sure 100%. It's 11 lots all combined.
Is it deeded as one lot or 11 lots?
No, like, all separate lots.
Yeah.
So if it's all 11 lots, why is it listed...
You don't have a picture of the new addition, the new thing, the new...
It's 11 lots. So this is not the right number? Lot 928.
Now you're on this side of the lot line now?
Yeah.
The actual structure...
So is that in fact, is it inside there?
You're old like 2.7?
Correct.
You shortened it.
Correct.
939...
That's correct.
Is it already out?
That was the old, and then when I went to land plan, I bumped it on my own property here, so yes.
So you shortened it five feet?
That's correct.
So the building inside...
Four feet.
Correct.
You shortened it four feet, so you're now...
Did you take the old building out yet?
Not 100%.
No, 100%, no.
It's still inside the yellow.
I have the walls there, but no...
This building is inside of that building?
That's correct, except for the roof. The roof is off.
Right.
It's, yeah.
So on the new construction, you want to be on your side of the property line?
That's correct. That's correct.
One foot, 5 inches.
Correct.
That's what you want to build.
That was my proposal, yes.
So this doesn't show what it's doing. He's one foot, 5 on this side of the property line now, because you shortened up.
This says 1.2 feet.
Yeah. See the 2.7? Two feet, 7 inches?
Two feet, 7 inches.
Right here. Right here.
Oh, I don't have that.
So originally, he was doing this, and then he had an overall length of, what is it? 43. Now he's shortened that... Yeah, shortened that to 39. Now he's shortened the building by four feet on this here, but not on this drawing. But he said you've already done it?
When I first done the structure, I thought...
No, have you moved it to four feet there? Have you taken on four feet?
No, I don't know.
So right now, he has this, but he's asking to be one foot, 5 inches on this side. He'll take five feet off this end is what he's asking to do.
But it's already built?
The pre-existing, you framed it?
I started, yeah. It's a 6x6 post that is that far off. It's a drive under garage, and that is 12 feet wide. So essentially, that, those dimensions are 3 6x6 posts that are at that offset.
Could this have been built somewhere else in the lot?
Yeah, that's my question.
Was there any septic or holes?
No.
We were starting, we were replacing...
It's been there for 23 years.
Yeah, we were basically replacing an existing structure, so that was there.
It's been there for 23 years. There's a driveway, there's a pool down the other end, there's wetlands all around it.
The sheds have been there.
So 23 years ago, when I tried putting a shed at the end of my driveway, and they said, "No, you can't do that. That would be like building in the middle of Route 58." So he told me where to put the original shed, and from there, that's what established the whole...
What's the original shed?
The original shed? There's two separate sheds there, I'm sorry.
So which one's the original? The this one or this one?
This is the original shed from...
The little one?
Correct, from 23 years ago.
Which was on somebody else's property?
At the time, that's where I was told to put it, yes. Yes.
And the people who are...
Because I tried putting it here at the end of my driveway, and they said, "No, you can't do that."
Oh, at the end of that driveway, oh, that's what I documented.
Yes, this is the paper road.
Yeah.
Okay, so essentially, this road ends here, and this is my yard. This road does not exist. Okay, so I tried putting a shed at the end here to make it convenient. You pull in your driveway, you have a shed there. And at the time, 23 years ago, they says, "No." The guy came down to grade the road from the town and says, "You can't put a shed there."
Okay, so I guess I have the same question Mr. Durgan does also. If you were, you know, gonna build a new one, why didn't you make this the side lot line and build it over this way?
Is there something that keeps it...
Because I didn't know. For 23 years, it's been there, so basically, I looked, I said, "All right, I'm gonna restructure what's there," is basically what I did. Obviously, I made a mistake when I went to land plan, and he says, "That's on your neighbor's property." Well, if I had known that, I obviously wouldn't have done that.
Where is the septic for the house?
Way back here. It's all the way back here. So all these lots here I own, and this is a paper road, and like I said, at the time, I had put the shed right here, which a street is not this big. It's like probably eight feet wide. It's not 30 or 40 feet wide like it shows here.
Do you know where your lot lines are for the different lots? You say you got 11 lots here.
No, not for each lot, no. I mean...
But see, it's listed as 928, which is 928, 928.
Land claim, I know.
But is it deeded as 11 lots or just one big lot?
Because all he does is...
No, it's a deeded separate lot.
Separate lots.
Because they only make reference to Lot 928.
Because back in the day, it was, if it was grandfathered in, he only needed 5,000 square foot to build, because it was all cottages around the lake. So back in the day, you needed 5,000 square feet per lot. So way back when, I had come up and I had said, "Oh, well, I have all these lots. Could I build another house or something here?" And they says, "Well, you'd be in land court for 12 years." So, but they're all individual lots, there's 11 of them.
Is there a pool on your lot, or...
Yes, there is.
Where's that now?
Oh, where's that? Yeah.
Close enough. We don't have to know exactly.
This is from 20 years ago. This is from 20 years ago.
You sure it's in the right place?
Yeah, I'm absolutely sure. The pool is right here, and these are all our lots, right here.
So you mentioned wetlands also, where...
It's all around here. This is runoff from Mont Ponce, that this would be 58.
Any wetlands on your property, though?
Over here, back here.
Right in the back, yeah, there's trash.
Yeah, yeah, it's all wetlands. That's why this was the place to... There used to be, back in the, when? A barn back here. This was the old farmhouse in Halifax. There used to be a barn back here that had electricity, water, everything, way back in the day. But this is all wetland. Not here, but here and here.
But nothing really on your property here? So there's nothing to keep you from building your garage here or over here off the property line to increase your setbacks to be more conforming?
Well, like I said, the pool, like, yeah.
I mean, if your pool is roughly about here, roughly, you'd still have all this to be able to build in without having to go for variances.
I mean, I went 23 years ago, and I have my driveway and everything. The whole yard conforms around of what I was told to do here, you know, and the pool is here. And like I said, this is all wetland, so no. I mean, this is, was the place to develop it.
All right, anybody, members of the board have any more questions?
How much bigger is the new building?
No, excuse me, wait a minute now. It's three feet taller.
Okay.
Okay, by the ridge. It's a 12-inch roof.
Okay.
I went from 13 foot to 16.
What's the square footage of the building? What is the square?
I'm not sure 100%. With the drive under, the first 12 feet is a drive under, so that leaves the actual, the actual building itself is 32 feet by 16, and then it has, like I said, it has the upstairs, because I pulled the eyebrow dormer out to make a shed dormer.
So the builder goes...
Footprints just on the...
Right?
Yeah, but the first, the first 12 feet here is...
Just over.
I'm sorry.
You got a garage underneath?
Yeah, the first 12 feet is 6x6 post, so the actual structure starts here, and this is like a carport that you drive under.
But you got, you have a...
But the upstairs goes all the way over. Correct. Correct.
Is there an upstairs in here, or is it just going up?
It's both. It's here and here.
What's it gonna be?
This one continues through?
That's correct.
No, no, the old one. Was there an upstairs or is it just...
It was a loft in both sections, so to gain the headroom, obviously, if somebody's gonna rebuild a structure, you want to make it better than what it is.
It's the same footprint, how big is it?
It's a foot bigger this way and shorter this way, so the overall structure is smaller in length, but not height.
Thank you.
But the dimension is...
The overall length of it is shorter.
By how many feet?
Four feet.
Four feet.
Correct.
So you take four feet off of this side.
That's correct.
And you added one foot on this side.
Yeah, I have the dimensions.
That's the plan, right? The four feet is, the four feet is currently there though, right? Isn't that what we were talking about before?
Mm-hmm. Because I started building that garage, accessory building.
So it's currently there, but you're planning on taking it, taking four feet off?
Is it a post and beam or foundation?
It is a sonnet tube with a beam, and, yeah, so post and beam, yeah.
There's no foundation?
No, no, but essentially, I'd like to pour a slab in there, of course, you know, because instead of having the floor rotted out again and again and again...
This couldn't have its separate electrical service and whatnot, or is it coming up?
It's kind of down the road. I have run off extension cords for the past 23 years. I would love to run an underground service out there, of course.
Is there water going out there?
No, no.
Bathrooms?
No, no. It's essentially a workshop. It's a garage and a woodshop. That's essentially what it is.
Excuse me, our neighbors are here that, but that, right there, that, but that property where the shed is, and they're here, they...
Okay, well, I'm gonna open up to the board after the board gets away answering questions. I don't see who can create this much. Did we find anything, is there maximum of...
Kind of slow.
Well, you just take your time. I thought there was a maximum square footage for next...
880, isn't it 880?
What's the square footage of the house? Square footage of the house?
Jeez, I don't know. I have to be honest with you.
How about the building inspector's letter in here?
It's under accessory buildings, I understand.
Accessory buildings, yeah.
Right?
Right. So we're talking about 167-12-E. Now, I'll read it.
It's a six-foot garage door.
Accessory buildings, sorry. 25% of the floor area of the livable ground floor area of the principal building not to exceed 300 square feet. That's accessory building, what about a garage?
Yeah.
Okay. Stand by.
Because his is bigger than 300 square. This is what? His is big in 300 square.
Why are we looking at that one, Pratt Street?
So it's a garage.
While we're looking at this, I feel like it's 880.
For maximum size, is there a percentage of the...
It's a percentage, and then I think, or...
Garage barn, so. 167-12-F, barn or garage. No garage or barn shall be located near or within 50 feet to the front line, 40 feet to the rail line, 30 feet to a sideline. No garage or barn shall have a ground floor area of greater than 884 square feet unless authorized by special permit of the Zoning Board of Appeals. No lodge than the foundation size of the house.
A ground floor area greater than 884 square feet, right?
Right, yeah. It's the lot lines that concern me, because it's a new structure. Any of you are gonna get technical. No detached garage or barn, if built under a Board of Appeals variance, shall be used to living quarters. Said detached garage, if built under the Board of Appeals variance, shall not by means of additional construction be attached to another building but to existing dwellings. All those are other buildings. But those are coming down?
They actually asked for a variance to that in the petition. They asked for a variance to that section that you said, the freestanding.
So if I look at this correctly, the second floor, the second story of the new structure, that, the portion of that building that's going over the, what you're referring to as the open, the drive under?
That one.
There's gonna be a second story over that? One single overhead door, just on the, just on the...
Yes.
What would that be, the eastern? No western?
To clarify, those other two buildings are coming down?
Yeah.
The other two buildings are inside that building?
It makes sense to keep it inside, but it just defeats the... So in other words...
I built it as tight as I could around the existing...
Yeah, they just tried to replace what was there. Just trying to replace what was there, that's all.
Okay, no other questions from the board. I'll open up to the audience. Okay, here's how this works. All your questions go through the, through the chair. You know, we don't, we don't have open discussions back and forth. It goes through the chair, and then I'll find answers for you if you haven't. So I'll need your name and your address, sir?
John Kean, 27 Bow Street, Halifax.
Okay.
The existing buildings are there? I got permits when they were built. Does this one have a permit? No. Also, I got this from the town. There's a pipe here and a pipe here, mark the zones where the property lines are, here and here.
Okay, and?
And he's building this house right here on the property line. Now, it's three times their size of that. Oh, come on, you guys, here's a picture of it. That's now a little shack. Eventually, it will become a house. Eventually, it will come a residential or commercial property in a residential area.
Okay, where's the fence? Where's this fence?
Now, that was moved around a little bit during the last 10 years.
Okay, so this is the overhang, would that put the fence?
It must be behind it.
That's from my house.
Where was your house?
Okay, where was your house?
Where you come from.
Where was that on that line?
Here, where was it?
Right here. This whole section right here.
Oh, so you're right here?
No, spin it around. Yeah, you're right here.
So where's the fence?
Right there. It's not there, it's moved somewhere else, but it's there.
Okay, where's the fence?
Is the property...
The fence, he's talking, the fence between our house and yours.
Is the property...
We have a fence. Yeah, we have a... Yeah, we have a fence in between our houses.
Between us?
Star cay fence, yeah.
Yeah, it's a star cay fence, and you would be Bertram?
I'm Merls, yeah.
Merls?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Do you make small...
He's absolutely right.
And was it property surveyed?
I found a kind of a touch of doors. Nobody's gone, you know, that's like twice as bad.
I don't, isn't it? And then I would hate it if it was still right here.
Okay, I have a question, then I'll find out. When you, we had this drawn up by the planning and whatnot. Did, uh, did you have the, the property surveyed?
Yes.
Yeah.
So you, you put those, you put those pipes in? You put the pipes in the...
What pipes?
No.
Well, there's a stake pipe right here that's shown.
No, absolutely not, if you will.
And the other one was over here?
Those have been there for probably, before I owned the place.
What pipes?
The one on that property line?
It might be the surveyor stakes.
Yeah, and the flags are there, that's exactly what they are. It, it's a square concrete box with a surveyor stake from back...
A monument.
Thirty, forty years ago, or, or whenever.
And you built this, what'd you say, twenty-three years ago?
That's correct.
Yeah.
That's correct.
And do you have copies of those permits that you took out?
Oh my god.
Did you take them out?
That was back, uh, when, uh, John, uh, John Dro was, uh, the building inspector.
Jack Doucet?
Yeah.
It was way back when.
Yeah, we have those records.
I mean, the records are there because they're on, this plot plan here...
Building permit records, they'll be...
Oh, no, I'm, I'm sorry, but this is dated...
Two thousand one?
Correct. And it's shown, I mean, so, that's eighteen years right there, proof that both structures have been there.
Right, but I guess we're trying to determine if they're legally built structures.
Mm-hmm.
In other words, you took permits out for them?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, because they'll be on record one way.
Yep.
Yeah, that's the pipe that you're referring to.
See, that, I have no idea what that is. The pipe out here, the pipe out, he's, there, there is, um, markers in the woods out here. And, and, um, uh, land planning had just, uh, flagged them. I just had him come down a month ago when this whole thing happened. And he's got, but I have no idea what that one is.
Oh, that's not flagged? That's not flagged?
No, that is not flagged.
That's as a seat opposed, that would've been the fence, where the fence starts.
That is not...
Cause the fence doesn't go across the paper road.
The only flagging he did was all along here. And then he took dimensions off the street, uh, like you can see there. But this here, I, I haven't seen anything on that.
The fence that goes along here, um, the homeowner's, they're here now, they, I mean, it's not an issue, but...
It is an issue if you build a structure on somebody else's property. It is an issue.
No, I, I understand that.
And complied with zoning, like, did you, I'm sorry, did you say you were contracted? Or no?
Yes, I am.
You are?
Yes.
Construction. Well, like I said, all we tried to do is just replace was what was there, that's all.
Did you say you had your lands surveyed?
Yes.
Yes, just, this is dated, uh, just had him do it, eight-two, two thousand nine.
What did you have it there? I mean, with your lots? Do you know where your lots are? I mean, was that all, was that all surveyed too?
He didn't do all the lots, basically, um, I had come up with the building inspector and I, I proposed what I was doing here. And he says, "Well, you gotta have somebody come down and prove how far off the property is."
What lines did you have surveyed?
Um, all these dimensions that you see here.
But the outside of your whole property comes in all of the lots?
Oh, he didn't do the whole entire property.
So you just did this line and this line, basically?
Yeah, he gave me the offsets of the property lines of the abutting, uh, you know what I mean? Cause that's kinda, um, I went over with the building inspector what he actually needed. And I, oh yeah, this one here is a little more detailed. It gives you a center off of the street that he says not constructed because it's really an eight-foot road. It's not a forty-foot road. It's a dirt road that's about eight feet wide.
Okay.
And the road ends right here. And then this is my grass and my poles here. And so this is a road that has never existed. It ends literally right here.
I have one last question. You said something about a driveway here? Is there a driveway here?
Correct. So, so for me, when I pull down here, my driveway is here.
Is it paved?
Yes, it is.
Right here?
You can see it right here. So in other words, this would be the shed, okay? This would be the road coming down, and this would be that driveway that you see.
But there's no pavement over here?
No, that's where this is, right here. That's where the canopy is.
Yep, okay.
Is this heated?
No, a wood stove. I have a, uh, wood stove out there. Yeah.
What do you, what do you plan on doing in the new building?
Uh, same thing I'm doing now, storing, storing my lawnmower, my sweeper, my, my rototella, everything downstairs, and then, um, uh, down here, to be honest with you, I had like a, uh, ten-foot table. I do estimating for my company, so I can roll out the, uh, blueprints. And, uh, so basically, when I redid it, I says, "Well, why would you, if you're gonna redo it, redo it the right way, that gives me the upstairs to have all my equipment, my, my wood tools, and, and keep all my gasoline tools downstairs."
What is, what is the name of your company?
It's not my company, I work for Tower Construction.
Tower Construction?
Yeah, we're a union company out of, uh, uh, South Boston. I had my own company, um, eight years ago, Northland Construction, but yeah, we're all union, we do all commercial work. So I do a lot of estimating out of, you know, this was my, you know, my, cause you can't spread them out on the, on the, on the coffee table inside, the, the blueprints are...
Yeah. You planning on doing work out there? Is there gonna be any noise involved? Is it gonna be...
Uh, just wall woodworking, yeah, of course. You know, you're gonna hear some skill saws and, you know, and, and table saws and, like anybody does, really. I'm not gonna be working at midnight doing commercial work, it just... The basic, the basic work that everybody does.
Well, I guess there's a difference. There's a difference between commercial work and just a hobby.
No, I do commercial work for a living. I don't do commercial work for a hobby.
And there's no commercial work being done on this property?
Absolutely not, no, absolutely not. Everything, everything that I do is prefabbed. It comes from Canada and this and that. We set all the walls with a crane. No, absolutely not. But if I'm gonna do window trim for a side job, I can set up my Craig jig and, you know, for a house or something. No, absolutely not, nothing with commercial work, that's, that's completely...
I guess that's what I ask, is that I, my, my, my question, I think a lot of the, the reasons for the bylaws are the impact of the building on the, the neighborhood's and neighborhood and that stuff.
And in all honesty, the building is, is to store my, my lawnmower under here with a plow.
Mm-hmm.
I, I built this here because I just bought a truck with a plow, so I wanted the drive under. I could put the plow there, okay? And then all my equipment down here, which half of it's ruined now because I don't have a roof on there and the hum plastic and everything's rusted, um, so I said, instead of having the eyebrow dormer, bring the wall out. It cost me an extra, you know, four windows and maybe a thousand dollars to have a seven-foot wall versus coming back and having an eyebrow dormer. And I said, that gives, that allows me to have all my woodworking tools up top and all my gasoline tools and everything down below. That was the reason behind it. Shame on me, I should've pulled the permit, I should've come up, talked to them, and said, "This is my game plan," but in my mind, this thing's been here for twenty-three years and I said, "I, I am changing the structure."
There is a difference between doing your union job in town, this tower, and...
Absolutely.
Well, wait a minute, hold on, let me finish. And, you know, doing woodwork as a hobby for yourself or doing side work out of a residential area?
That's correct.
Okay, so you understand the difference, then? You doing sidewalk is still commercial work?
No, it's not commercial.
So you don't take, you don't compensate?
No, if I don't do any commercial on a side work, I'd have to have a sixty-by-sixty building.
No, but when you said doing frame, like, windows and stuff like that, come on, it's, it's, you said, your, your job on the side. If it's a, if it's a job or a business on the side, it's a, it's a business. And this is in a residential area. You see where I'm going with that?
Oh, absolutely.
There's a huge difference.
Absolutely.
And like, Peter, we just referred to it, that's what zoning is set up for.
Right.
And so if this is, uh, residential area, it can't, for us to issue the permit, one of the criteria is it cannot be detrimental to the established character of the neighborhood.
Right.
And so if you're doing side work, carpentry work on the side, even though it's not your major business?
Correct.
It's a commercial venture in a residential area?
I fully understand that, yeah, sure. I just meant, to be honest with you, I meant, like, right now I've been vinyl siding my parents' house. So instead of going over there and trying to set up a set of sawhorses and...
You're not being compensated as, to your parents' house, they disown you.
You know, I have, I have a, uh, I have a table set up and I can set up my Craig jig and do it there and then throw it in the back of my pickup and bring it over. Yeah, uh, the union work, no, we're doing, we're doing two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-square-foot buildings. It wouldn't even make sense.
No, 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 I'm not putting the two together, I'm putting your side business separate from that.
Yeah, yeah, I do understand.
Are there any other questions from the...
I got one.
Yes?
Now, from roughly three to seven, most of the times, Saw's running pretty good. He does run a business out of there. All summer. I had thirty years, Saw, running. I, just letting you know that.
Are there employees there or is he there by himself? Just him? I didn't know if there were trucks coming in and out. That's what I would be concerned with, if, if there was, uh, traffic due to a commercial business in a residential area, that would be a concern of the board.
Okay.
But there is it.
Can I ask one question? I'm sorry, three to sev- I don't understand three to seven, I don't work, I don't...
No, you, you're up. Like I said, it's not every single day, but during the week, it's, it runs.
I can supply a paste that tells me that I'm gonna work for forty hours a week. I mean, I'm not looking at it.
Yes, ma'am, you would.
I'm just trying to...
We live next door, it's never been...
And I'm sorry, your name again, please, I'm sorry.
Kristen Merls, it's never been a disruption. There's not saws or anything. Um, it's really never been a disruption. It's right next to our property, we have no problem with the structure at all. Um, and it's never been a disruption again, it's not disrupted anything, there's no noise or anything, and we're right next door.
Of course she works.
She's worked most of the day, so I could hear it too.
And I'm retired.
Uh, any other questions or anything on the board? I'm s-
I'd just like to know that, that is not a garage, that's a big huge house. That's all it is. It's not a garage that you've got with your cars. It's a big huge steeped house. That's not a big garage.
You guys can always go down, okay?
What is the pleasure of the board? Any more questions? I personally definitely want to walk through this.
Pretty big.
I'd like to see it. Just, I'm familiar with the area and I don't understand why it couldn't be placed somewhere else. We can't even issue a variance because there's no potential for...
Well, we haven't seen the lot, there's a little bit...
Well, according, according to his, according to what I've explained, it, this is, this is not...
At this point, I'm not seeing a hardship.
You're more than welcome to go down there anytime. Not a problem.
Well, we prefer middle of the night, so I'm just gonna...
Is the pool still...
You're more than welcome to go down there anytime.
All right, uh, why don't we do this, we'll, we'll schedule this, uh, continue the, the meeting then? It'd be my suggestion, continue to next month. Uh, the weekend prior to the, uh, to the hearing, we'll, uh, schedule an onsite. Oh, I was just gonna say, normally what we ask on an onsite inspection is to have it staked off, but you don't have to stake it off if it's already there, correct?
It's all there and, and the old structure is still underneath it?
That would show the, uh, the property line, you know, between yours and the Merls' house, so we know exactly how close the, the, uh, the lot line is to the, to that far corner. So that would be helpful.
Like I said, you're more than...
What do you want to do, uh, do you want to schedule a time, or? Oh, well, yes, I will need a motion to, uh, to continue the, uh, hearing until, until November... When's our next one?
November fourth.
November?
Fourth.
November fourth is our next hearing? So we have, that Saturday prior would be November second. How's this, how's that Saturday sound to you guys? Good with you? What time? What's that?
Nine o'clock.
Nine? Nine, good for you?
It's good for him.
Nine o'clock?
When?
Uh, November second at nine AM, we'll be able to walk the property.
Oh, oh, that one?
Yeah, well, that's the Saturday before our next meeting.
Oh, okay.
You're shaking heads, I know, a good time for you?
No, I just, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm very discouraged because I have all this stuff that I've accumulated over thirty years that's getting destroyed. And what do I do, rent storage or something? I, I mean, I, I can't keep the place weather tight. I've thrown tops over there every other day. I have, you know, I'm sorry, my frustration, that's all.
Okay, uh, I'll need a motion to, uh, continue the, uh, meeting until November fourth.
I'll make a motion to continue petition...
Nine oh five.
Nine oh five to November fourth.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right, and now I need a, uh, a motion to, uh, do the onsite inspection. It is the, uh, it is the normal condition of the, of, of every variance and special permit that we do an onsite, that, that is, unless it's, unless it's waived. So I don't want you to think it's particular to just you, it's, that is, that is how the board...
Whoa, 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 the existing structure is still under the new structure, so...
Okay, so do I have a motion to, uh, conduct the onsite on November second at nine AM?
November second, nine AM.
I'll make a motion to, uh, schedule an onsite visit for petition number nine oh five.
Yes.
Uh, to November second at nine AM.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
We'll see you, uh, also where the, where the, uh, the hearing itself is, is continued to next month. There, that does open the inspection to whomever wants to go. So, you know, okay, just in case you saw some crazy people walking around your property or anything like that. It's, it is a matter of extending the, the public hearing, okay?
So November second, you guys will be down.
At nine AM.
And when's the next hearing?
Uh, November fourth.
Okay.
Uh, you give out on our call and she'll, uh, give you a time. Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate you coming in. All right, it's a good idea. Why don't we take a quick five minutes to read?
Thank you.
And the road was prepared by the town. It wasn't going to be tired.
That's, that's a big house. That's not much.
Oh, when we get there, we'll see.
I know. No, it's a big house.
And those people, their neighbors, they're working, they'll come show up at seven o'clock at night, and I can hear them, comes home at two thirty.
To be honest, I don't think we can talk about it at all right now.
No, no, stay, joke's over.
Now, the pictures. Yeah, that's the same.
Sure.
The pictures show the old structures. See, see the problems there? Here's the practical tree, this is before the new construction even started, and here's the guy that. He said all that time that make it.
I mean, if you don't know any of this, I guess, you got it now.
I've been following that street.
Oh, yeah? Has it?
It's been on, it's always been there. The only way you can turn around is just to drive, turn around and go back out.
Like the end?
At the end.
Put it there.
And you turn around and go back. How's that guy a father driver?
Same, Dan, I wonder how much bigger that new building is, those are the big.
You put that, put that shed inside the oven?
Yeah, that's one thing, it's not the same building. All right, this is a quick meeting, great.
Be back in.
Be back in.
Quarter of eight.
Chances are not good. I don't see that working out.
You're fine.
All right.
That's only happened twice, I don't expect that here.
No, this is the same one? Please God, no.
How we doing? Okay, let's do nine oh six first. The Halifax Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, October seventh, two thousand nineteen, at seven fifteen PM, in meeting room number one of the Town Hall, four ninety-nine Plymouth Street, Halifax, Mass, on the application by John McIntyre for a special permit for an existing in-law apartment located at Six Kenzie's Path, Halifax, Mass, said property is owned by John McIntyre of Six Kenzie's Path, Halifax, Mass, O two three three eight, is shown on the assessors map eighty-two, lot three K, title reference book two nine zero six eight, page three oh six. The applicant seeks a new special permit for their pre-existing in-law apartment for use in accordance with the zoning bylaws of the town of Halifax on the section one sixty-seven seven D twelve, area is zoned residential, petition number nine oh six. Mr. McIntyre?
Yes.
Hey, how are you doing?
Good, how are you doing?
Very good.
Good.
All right, so what are we doing? What, I guess I'm confused. Does an existing in-law apartment there, is it being used as an in-law apartment?
Yes.
Okay, so this is, I guess my question is, why isn't this a renewal?
It's called a renewal, but it's a new petition.
Yeah, they all have to do that, right?
They all have to be a new permit.
Okay.
Completely new permit.
Until. All right. I guess my first question is, where's our little form here, we got it going here? I see uh, no changes have been made to the size?
Nope.
Structure?
Nope.
Walls put up?
Nope.
Petitions? Uh, utility services, they're all the same? Same people living in there?
Yep, my mom.
Did I forget anything?
No, that's it, just my mom.
Any questions from the board members? How about a uh, motion to waive the onsite?
Motion to waive the onsite.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, there's a motion on the floor that's been made to waive the onsite, in a second, all those in favor of waiving the onsite, please say aye.
Aye.
Waiving the onsite passes five zero to zero. Okay, how about a uh, motion regarding petition number nine oh six?
I'll make a motion on petition nine oh six to issue a special permit for a pre-existing in-law apartment.
I'll second.
Any new or s- any conditions, anything new, separate, good, bad? All right, there's a motion to accept petition number nine oh six as presented, in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And it passes, five zero to zero. Okay, Alana will explain you, you got the special permit, you gotta go down to the registry of deeds, register that, after a twenty day waiting period, Alana's got all that stuff, she's really very good at it.
Okay, good, all right, thank you, guys. Yeah, my mom thanks you too.
Thanks, very much.
We don't get that a lot, no.
My mother, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll see you.
Yeah, good night.
Seventy-four, we're flying out.
Thank you very much.
We all here? Good. Uh, let's move on to petition number, oh, do we have to sign anything, we have to sign the paperwork and stuff?
Yeah.
She's good, isn't she?
She is.
She scares the, she scares me sometimes.
She's paying more attention than I am.
Yeah. Hey, you're suspended.
Not to Cincinnati.
Now that I'm retired, all my signatures will be in crayon.
That is fair, I think that's part of your contract, yep. But I think you also have to do sixteen more boards, I think that's also in your contract.
That's all.
The green tree committee.
I'm just gonna say, Barbara's gonna come up to my meeting and swam in, she'd do something special for you.
I texted you, I said she's a wonderful person, and she.
I think she likes you better than she likes me.
Look at this face.
Okay, the Halifax Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, October seventh, two thousand nineteen, at seven twenty PM, in meeting room number one of the Town Hall, four ninety-nine Plymouth Street, Halifax, Mass, on the application by Robert, Michael and Jessica Debona, uh, for a special permit for an existing in-law apartment located at two twenty-nine Franklin Street, Halifax, Mass. Said property is owned by Robert, Michael and Jessica Debona of two twenty-nine Franklin Street, Halifax, Mass, O two three three eight, as shown on assessors map ninety-three, lots one, four and five, title reference book number three eight one one two, page one thirty-eight. The applicants are seeking a new special permit for their pre-existing in-law apartment for use in accordance with the zoning bylaws of the town of Halifax on the section one sixty-seven seven D twelve, area is zoned residential, petition number nine oh seven. Hi, long time no see.
Finally, if we're different.
Okay, any changes, deletions, additions, expansions?
None.
Uh, new petitions put up? Same people?
Same people.
Nothing to do with Mike, come on, you said last time you were gonna work on this. We're so close, right? Any other questions from members of the boards?
Nope.
Okay, uh, how about, I'll entertain a motion to uh, waive the onsite unless people wanna go out and take a look at the Debona plantation? Huh?
Motion to waive the onsite.
Second.
There's a motion to uh, waive the onsite in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll entertain a motion regarding petition number nine oh seven.
Make a motion on petition nine oh seven to accept the pre-existing in-law.
As presented? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor that has been second to accept petition number nine oh seven as presented, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass zero, five zero to zero. We are good. Thank you, let's do this again real soon.
I'd like to say I'll see you again in five years, but I gotta go and I'm gonna.
See you in an hour. Take it easy, guys. Throw her to the wall. And they leave now. We don't even know that lady. I have a stamp made, I think.
You should, yeah. We can get soup for that, that'd be great. In crayon, in a crayon stamp.
That's what I'm talking about.
That's how it's done.
So there'll be no four J's.
Hey, that's not real crayon.
All right, where are we? Petition nine oh eight. The Halifax Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, October seventh, two thousand nineteen, at seven twenty-five PM, or thereabouts, in meeting room number one of the Town Hall, four ninety-nine Plymouth Street, Halifax, Mass, on the application by Lee and Linda Fuller and Jessica Colonino.
Good job.
That's, I think, the first one of ever.
That might be true.
That's it, I'm going home.
That's my best entertainment.
We'll call it a day.
Yeah.
For a special permit to create an in-law apartment located at four eighty South Street, Halifax, Mass. Said property is owned by Lee and Linda Fuller and Jessica Colonino of four eighty South Street, Halifax, Mass, O two three three eight, as shown on assessors map seventy-one, lot seventeen C, title reference book number five one two seven zero, page two twenty. The applicants are seeking a new special permit to create an to create an in-law apartment within the footprint of the existing house for use in accordance with the zoning bylaws of the town of Halifax, under section one sixty-seven seven, scheduled use regulations in section one sixty-seven seven D twelve, area is zoned residential, petition number nine oh eight. Okay, you're up. Okay, what do we have there now, and what are you looking to do?
So right now, basically.
Who owns the house?
All three of us, we're all in the mortgage. Um, and she's my my mother, he's my stepfather, so we're gonna leave it, I don't claim him entirely, so.
That's bad.
Um, the building was a church previously, the.
Where are you? Where is this?
Four eighty South Street.
So just right up the road, just uh, right next to the elementary school, South Street's right there.
Yeah.
And we're right by the blacksmith.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, and it still looks like a church from the outside, but um, basically what we're just looking to do is, I can't afford to live in this state by myself, and they'd like to eventually retire, so we bought this home together with the hopes of all sharing the bills, having a little separation, so we're just really looking in their part of the home, which is the basement level, for them to be able to, you know, put a stove legally in their kitchen, that's, I mean, the gist of it.
Kitchen's existing already.
The one in the basement?
Yeah, it was the church kitchen.
And so then, what are you gonna put, another one upstairs?
The former owners actually had already put a kitchen upstairs.
On the second, on the, on the first one?
First dish floor, um, it's a very hard home to describe, but um.
Are there two stories above the basement or just one?
Just one.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, the basement's like a full block out though.
Okay. So they did put one in or they were in a box?
No, they did, the first floor, the top level is fully finished, they put a nice kitchen, um, you know, it's too bad we're.
Hold it on?
Yeah. And downstairs is basically a big open space, but there was the existing church kitchen that they're using.
So there's two sets of plans, is that one the existing and this is?
Yeah, we, what we're trying to do is make a master bedroom also downstairs.
A master bedroom.
Which one is which is what they're asking.
Which is the older, which is the door?
Yeah, which one are we going with?
Or that must be.
The architect is the one you.
That's demolition, what's that say?
Looks like this one, lower level plan.
Lower level, these are both the lower level, one is what we want to take out, these existing walls, we mopped out to here on the other planet, you'll see.
And put in a living room?
Changes and my own, yeah, my own bedroom to be put in, yeah.
So there's no bedroom?
No.
Right now?
Exactly.
Just a kitchen and what, a gigantic room?
Yeah. Kind of exists like a big studio apartment right now.
What sort of one bathroom?
So what part of this house are you gonna be sharing?
I'm sorry?
Yeah, that's the.
What part of this house are you gonna be sharing together?
So that's been a little bit tricky to find within what the laws seem to state, um, we did bring the architect over, just tried to discuss with her what we were looking at. My front door is, um, from what I understand, they have to have a second way out of the home, and that would be their only second way out, so the staircase is shared, the front door on the top floor along with like the hallway that goes to it, and at the bottom of the stairs, there's the second bathroom, our laundry area, the utility room, which I am an owner on the house, so I would like access to that fully, I don't want it blocked off.
So there is no laundry utility room on the first floor?
No, sir. I realize it's.
But this shows three, uh, two bathrooms.
So in the basement.
This shows two bathrooms on the, in the basement.
In the basement, so what you're looking at there is essentially the the former owners, what they did is, I believe that that was, you know, when it was a church, it was the men.
Men's ladies, yeah.
So what they've done in one bathroom is they put a sink and a toilet, then in the other one is the shower and a sink, so it's kind of like this one and a quarter bathroom that has a wall in between it, if that makes sense, it's such a weird house.
You've seen that it's, it was a church, how do you change that?
It seems like what?
That it was a church.
Yeah.
They had an upper level and a lower level.
All right, what do we have for utilities? Are they shared utilities or are they separate?
They're shared.
Let's get that out of the way, same thing with the septic system?
Yes, sir.
Has the septic system with all the bathrooms and the new bedrooms configuration been approved, gone through the board of health?
Uh, one of us been approved, and hopefully spoke with them, and they may have gallons will handle the extra bedroom.
Yeah, basically what we were told by the building inspector was we needed to start with you all, but when we were here to kind of get the information, he did bring the woman over from the board of health to tell us what our stuff would accommodate, so that we at least know who you're working with.
Are we gonna meet this criteria?
We're planning on the septic system somewhere over.
So the stairwell is open?
Yes, sir.
Right?
There will, let me back up, there is a door at the bottom that we're completely happy to remove if that would meet the requirements.
This one here?
Right at the bottom of the stairwell, yes, it's just kind of like a regular.
That goes, that goes in the?
The bottom of the, how big is that hall at the bottom of the stairs?
Pretty wide, I don't know.
It's about seven foot wide, seven feet wide, and it's about fifteen feet long, I guess, at the end of the stairs.
And there's no, is the, sorry, is the door at the end of that hallway or at the bottom of the stairs?
There's actually two, there's one at the bottom of the stairwell, and then there's another one before you go into what was the building before, right beside the kitchen.
So there's that door, and then there's a door.
We're willing to remove both of that house, there's just.
This is shared space, shared living space.
Right, so if they get rid of this.
That's seven feet wide.
Is it?
Yeah, that's, the hall is seven, the doors are open is seven feet wide.
And this, this is wide open, if they take that door out, so then it will be.
So this one, this here is the front door, if you can look at this, so we know what we're looking for, pointing at.
I'm sorry about that.
Oh, she's talking things.
Yeah, when I, public speaking is not my thing.
This is not public.
Look at this crowd, look at this crowd. It's a guy pointing.
Well, I forget a thing.
So this is the front door. No, no.
No, no, yep, no, he's correct, so this is the front door here, yes. No, wait, I lied, this is our front door here, and then when you come in, you have the staircase that goes down to the lower level, and you can keep going this way to go into the other part of the house.
That's just a window. So, so then.
So that's open.
This is the front door, and then this is how that they would use it as a second entrance by coming up this stairwell.
And, uh, well, we got shared, uh, shared laundry?
Yes.
And the shared hall?
Yep.
And there's no petition here?
No, sir. No, trust me, they they come up whenever they want. Without a door or anything.
Or have a alarm go off or anything like that.
No, no, I tried.
Sure, you could have lasers.
I was gonna get a vicious dog, but I haven't gotten there yet, so.
That's, I mean, if the hall is the shared living space and that opening, you count the first floor as the in-law apartment, and that's the step, opening at the kitchen and the bedroom is the.
Okay, what about the in-law requirement of a maximum square footage slash percentage of the first floor living space, are we gonna do that?
Is the, I have a question, the first floor, the basement, is the whole thing being finished as a living area, or is there any that like a utility area?
Just the, just the front hallway.
Any storage in the bar?
There is a storage closet down there, yes, so it's.
Oh, closet.
Yeah, right there, then the laundry, and there's a utility room too, I don't know why it's not, it's like right next to the laundry.
So you're looking, storage and utility is shared?
Yeah.
In the hallway here? In the hallway here?
In the hallway, so what are we down, so what are we down to square footage? How many square feet is the first floor?
Just, when you say first floor, you're talking about the upper level that we're looking at. It's like just shy of sixteen hundred square feet, I believe.
And what will be, what will be-
The basement's roughly the same.
Yeah, it's a little bit smaller, but not much.
Basically, we're looking at this.
Yep. So is that dimensions?
Let's not get crazy.
You can just take the rows here, the rows would have it. So you get this dimension, this dimension, you get this dimension right here.
What does it require, like nine hundred square feet? Is that minimum or max?
I think it's whatever, it's crazy, isn't it? Eight hundred and eighty or something like fifty?
So you thought it was nine?
I think it's nine hundred for the in-law apartment.
Okay.
I'll wall something off.
Is that something because of the style of building? Can they ask for variance?
Well-
They didn't ask for one.
So if the, so if you're, if you're arguing, if you argue that this is the opening into the in-law apartment?
No, that's the first floor.
This is the main residence.
This is the opening to the in-law right here. Where'd you get seven feet, Cassia?
Right here. As they come in the front, this is the, this is the old-
Seven feet?
No, here.
Seven feet wide.
Very wide, well.
On the first floor, upstairs.
But it, why, why can't, the in-law can't be on the first floor?
Why can't what?
The in-law can't be on the first floor?
It can be.
So if you call this the in-law apartment, this is shared space, this is shared space and this is shared space.
With that door.
But this is wide into the in-law apartment.
That's the shit, they're gonna open up that opening.
Right. That's gonna be the problem.
Why is it a problem?
Well, 'cause the, well-
If you just take the door-
Well, no, I guess this is, yeah.
'Cause there's your opening, right?
Yeah, there's your opening.
And you said that was seven feet?
That's what the gentleman said.
Probably seven feet the hallway, yeah.
So this is the in-law apartment, which makes this, if this is sixteen hundred square feet, that might be right around nine hundred.
Do we have a rule?
Upstairs will be the main or the-
A lot of rules?
It's gonna be the main.
You have a rule?
We're asking for the basement to be the in-law.
Yeah.
So they're asking for the basement to be the in-law. That's what they'd like to do.
Well, that's, yeah, it could be, I, we would want to-
As long as you don't take away my stove.
Yeah, right.
I mean, I guess I would microwave pretty well, but-
If you argue that this is the main area.
There is a stove upstairs.
Yeah, but doesn't ask, right?
I, I'm just going for what are you looking at during the trying to get the-
So I'm trying to make this the square footage and this the rest of the living area. So that this is within nine hundred, which it might be.
The size of the in-law apartment shall be no larger than fifty percent of the first floor living space of the main residence or nine hundred square feet, whichever is greater.
So the second, the, the second floor is-
So if this is nine hundred.
That's why I'm saying is if you make this the primary, the whole thing, is the shared space considered the, the, uh, the main building?
It doesn't say where it has to be.
All right, so if we consider that?
Well, the problem, so if you do that, right? But there's still no opening down here.
The opening's here.
Upstairs in the main living area, right?
Well, if we call all this the main living area and this is a shared space in the main living area.
Yeah.
And then a big portion of this is shared space and all that. And if they're willing to add another wall to reduce the size, they can get what they want and satisfy, we can make, 'cause you said you would be willing to put a wall in the basement to reduce the, so they're willing to change this to give them what they want, so I'm trying to say.
It shows almost eight feet.
It's listed as two offices in the basement. That's how it's gonna be set up, two separate rooms?
They might not need to add that wall.
So those are storage. Storage is not part of the in-law apartment.
Yes.
So that reduces the size.
The whole goal of this exercise is that it's not just an adult apartment.
Right, oh, we have hope, yeah.
It can't be fifty percent large and open space.
Sixteen?
Nine hundred square feet.
Separate utilities, that's-
That's sixteen hundred, this is sixteen hundred.
That's why we're trying to fit it up.
This is a forever.
This is out for every time.
We're not doing it just 'cause-
Sixteen by fifteen.
We understand.
One foot equals a quarter inch. So there's a quarter inch.
You don't have to worry about that.
As long as we can have our main bedroom downstairs that we were asked to put in and our kitchen area.
That shows twenty-eight by-
It's a seven, right?
Twenty-eight by thirty-two.
It's under nine hundred.
It's under nine hundred?
Eight ninety-six.
Oh, yikes.
What is it?
It's eight ninety-six, it's under nine hundred.
A portion is, what'd you measure?
This building.
So if you count that opening as seven feet, is the what, opening and the rest of the-
Actually, it looks, it shows eight feet, I think.
Eight by eight? Then it's obviously bigger than six. Then they don't have to do anything.
Very wide, all I've ever put tape over it. Yeah, it's a large hallway.
This is cool.
Well, the problem is we can only be fifty, we're reading that right, it's only fifty, the in-law can only be fifty percent of the-
Or nine ninety.
Shows a five foot opening.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, that's what it says.
Which means that none of those openings are six.
No. I think it's, the way I read this, it looks five to me.
I already did math homework tonight.
Well, see, that shows an eight, this shows a quarter. The scale is a quarter.
Yeah, but what's the scale on the drawing?
A quarter?
On the drawing? Did you measure the scale? Use it.
It's this size.
Measure the wood, measure it first.
See, one side says a quarter, the other says the eight, you don't measure it.
It's five feet.
Was the hall five feet, did you say?
I'm sorry?
Is the hall five?
The opening is five.
Oh, the opening, yeah.
What do we need, six? We just wanna prevent somebody installing a door.
Yeah, I realize that.
That's something.
So it excludes that stuff.
Unless you take that front bedroom and you open that up, if that's part of the shared living space.
Okay, which front bedroom?
They can open-
They can open that up.
Put a header on it and open it up.
There's nothing, there's nothing away there. It looks like there's not-
The shared living area? If they have five feet, they can make six just by putting in a header.
But what are they using for the shared living area?
This is the base here.
This whole space down in here.
So that you can't do.
Huh?
But this could be.
You can't.
That could be shared?
Boys, bathrooms, laundry rooms.
Like if this is outside, if you count this as outside of the in-law, this is in shared space.
Why couldn't you count that? That bedroom up there, where your hand is. Let's write that one.
Make that a reading room, not that doorway, it's a reading room, it's a shared living area. You guys like to read?
Just give it a little bit.
Give it a little opening up a little bit.
Okay, what we're trying to do is, is-
We're free, so.
Fit the, uh, fit the requirements and the definition to your plan.
So if this was six feet wide, this was the shared space, they could put a door here. Correct.
Under reason, why, why?
Well, no, 'cause it needs to be a six foot opening between the in-law and the rest of the house, right?
But this could be closed up, but this, the shared space.
But if they put a door here, that defeats the purpose, 'cause you're shutting off the apartment bar. Right? I mean, they could arguably still have a door here if this is the entryway into the in-law. They just can close this off. Right?
I'd, I'd move that.
It might, is that? I don't know how everybody else feels, but I, if I'm looking at it in a certain way. I guess the concern is shutting this off into an apartment.
Right.
But you still can't get into it unless you get into the rest of the house. Right?
Correct. 'Cause this is the lower level.
Right. So there's really no way, um, if this is open, to shut off an apartment that you only have access to one area to. Right?
Right. And would you still have to make this a reading slash sewing room or something?
I guess not. But it would have to be, that would have to be the shared space, right?
You'd want it to be.
The closet can't, and the hall doesn't count.
How big does the shared space have to be?
Doesn't say.
It doesn't say, but it does say what it can't be.
Some shared living space.
But also can't be the entryway or the hall or the bathrooms, right, or the laundry rooms.
Yeah, specifically enumerates the laundry room. Excuse me, slash.
I'll put a couch anywhere you want.
It's not, it's, it's arguably more what you call than what you put in there.
We're calling it a reading sewing room.
A family.
We'll take your incentive.
Right.
Somebody's gonna lose a button once a month.
It's true.
I'm a pastor, so I've got a big extension log.
'Cause I, it, like, it, it, like, the more, the, I, the idea is not to be able to close it off to make it an apartment and you kind of-
That's, that's what we-
Right?
Closet, yeah.
Like with that opening, you kind of can't.
Because we don't intend doing anything else. It's a family home and that's it.
Well, somebody else came in and-
Well, the question is, we wanted to sell it, they put a door up and now we have a duplex.
Of course, no, we completely understand the reasoning for all of it. I just-
All right, so what do we wanna do? Guys, what do we wanna do? We wanna open up this bedroom on the, uh, on the first floor and call, and not make it a bedroom, just open up that room.
Well, this has to be opened up to six feet.
Well, that's number two.
Okay.
But number one is to make the shared living space, that bedroom, right where your finger is, yes.
Yeah, that opening is five right now?
Definitely five, right?
So what are we gonna make that, Jerry? We make that six?
Yeah.
All right.
I'm okay with a five.
Are you?
Yeah, kinda.
Yeah, it's, you know, less work, they do five, they-
This is gonna be shared living, shared living space.
Okay.
All right, this is gonna be the, uh, reading slash sewing room. Community room.
Okay.
I don't know, what about the rest of the board? How do you feel about five foot, six foot? Yes, we need it, no, we don't?
Six foot opening.
You want a six foot opening? This door has to be made six feet.
Okay.
All right?
Well, the six feet only goes into the in-law. Right? Like this is the opening.
Yeah, we're trying to make it as shared as possible.
Yeah, you, you don't wanna close that and make it into a bedroom.
And this is, this is already six, so we're good with this?
It's five, I'm good with it.
Should be better off making a shared space down here.
You want two bedrooms upstairs?
Yeah.
I mean, I, I would prefer to keep it that way, but I'm willing to do what you guys ask.
Like, you have to share space, it seems like they're more flexible in the basement. Can we make a shared space in the basement? Or does it have to have that six foot?
Yeah, but you'd have to get rid of two bathrooms. Then we, then you don't have a bath downstairs.
May I ask what you're referring to in terms of six feet down there? I'm just a little confused what I'm looking at.
The opening, the doorway opening.
Okay. So downstairs, though?
There's nowhere, there's no, there's no real opportunity for shared space downstairs.
No, see, because those, the two bathrooms that are there, which were the, which were the men's and ladies' room, there would be no bathroom downstairs.
This one's got the shower in it, that's got the shower in it.
So that would be the easiest solution right here.
That would be the-
But get this back bedroom, we made into a shared living.
This is gonna be our main bedroom, this one here. That's why we're proposing that wall there. And these were, this wall was in place, that's how we bumped it out just to make more room. My wife works from home and I'm a pastor, so we'd like to have the two separate offices as possible.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Huh? You think that's okay?
Yeah.
Do you want, so, do, does she need to make this opening then?
I mean, I think maybe the door off is probably enough.
Remove the door completely? 'Cause you're good with five feet?
You gotta cut it off.
It's a load bearing wall.
Yeah, I mean, it, like, if we take the door off, it's definitely-
I mean, I would love to not spend more money cutting into the wall, but I understand if we have to, but-
I think if that stays open-
Yep.
Yeah, that, that is completely-
And arguably this stays open.
There's no door in the wall.
Right?
Right here? No, no, and it honestly would be really expensive to even try to-
And actually, the garden, you can't put a door there.
Yeah, I mean, I don't make enough.
To, to, no, I mean, to fulfill the requirements.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, I wouldn't put one there, but it would be difficult.
Taking that door out of that one like that?
Nope, that's fine.
So what about that doorway?
That door can come off too.
But I thought that was the purpose of leaving that on only because we fulfilled the requirement of the shared living space upstairs, so-
There's a door you can close up. Technically, it's not even an apartment because-
'Cause you still have to go through, you would still be able to go in, so if somebody rented this, whoever lived down here would still be able to walk right into somebody else's house.
And bottom line, if you put a door here and close this off-
They have no bathroom.
The people would have no bathroom. Boy, that stinks.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, it would make for an uncomfortable thing.
Yeah.
It just, it's so tough with this house because usually in-laws on the same floor, that's the problem with this house, like-
Well, 'cause we don't-
What do you wanna do with that wall, with that door?
We don't normally ask for-
You think you're okay?
Close it off, you have no bathrooms. Which one?
We're on the bottom, bottom floor.
Bottom floor, this one here. Taking, making that six feet?
No, just leaving it.
Just leaving it off.
Oh, yeah, leaving it there.
Because if you take it off, they would, if you close it off, they wouldn't have a bathroom.
I'm confused, which, where are you making six foot upstairs?
We're leaving that as five. We're not increasing it to six, just leaving it as five, that's what it is, and taking that door off.
We're good. Is that good? 'Cause you have to agree to it, 'cause if you say there's no way we can-
And then there's a doorway at the bottom of the stairs too?
There is a door at the very bottom, yes.
Trying to think of like, if, if this were all one floor, right, and this was right here, we would probably be okay with this door right here. 'Cause the shared living space is here and the open, the open is here, right? So, like, that's why it's kind of, I'm all right with that door, I think, right?
Yeah.
'Cause even if they did rent that, which they're not planning on doing, even if they did rent that, you'd still have to go in, you could walk right into somebody else's. You can't secure them, right?
I don't mind moving that door there, first of all.
My next move, my next move is in a pine box out there.
It's that you guys are worried about, it's that forty years from now when somebody comes down.
No, completely understood.
That's a good point to me.
Well, you'll see me in forty years, you're there in forty years already, you know?
Alright, let's do that.
Let's do it.
Now, let's, uh, first of all.
That would be fantastic.
Comes a reading room, sewing room.
Yeah, right, it's.
Alright, that okay with you? Reading room, sewing room, shared room? I mean, yes, you can put a daybed in there or pull a couch or whatever you need to do. We don't wanna get too restrictive on you.
Thank you.
Alright, first of all, uh, okay, we're open, thank you. How about the onsite inspection? What do you wanna do?
Motion to waive the onsite.
There's a motion on the floor to waive the onsite? Do I have a second? Everybody familiar with where we are?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, is there a second?
Second.
Alright, there's a motion to waive the onsite, and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes five to zero to zero. That just saved you a month.
Thank you. Oh, thank you.
Does that also approve us for the alterations that we suggested down there also?
We haven't gotten that far.
Yeah, we haven't got that far.
A separate issue?
Okay, uh, regarding petition number, uh, nine oh eight, do I have a motion with conditions?
I'll make a motion to, can I open this back up? I'll make a motion to.
Sorry, not done.
No, no, no. Accept petition number nine oh eight. With the condition that the five-foot opening on the first floor remain.
The first floor, so that this remains open.
And the first floor room off the entry.
Room number zero zero two is designated the sewing slash, uh.
Community room.
Uh, reading room, reading room, yeah.
Community room. You all wanna come over?
So that, that remains shared?
Yep, shared living space.
Okay, so that bedroom on the lower level, I just wanna, so we all understand and.
Do we have to make that a six-foot opening, is that what you're saying?
Nope.
No?
Good. Anything else, gentlemen?
Just two things?
Nope.
So far.
There's a door at the bottom of the stairs, that needs to be removed also?
Oh, that's the third one?
Yes.
Which door?
Are we taking this out?
No, at the bottom of the, there's one at the bottom of the stairs, correct?
There's one at the very bottom, and then you want.
Yeah, just at the very bottom.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the five-foot opening in the first floor remains open?
Yeah.
That the room off the entry on the first floor is shared living space, and the door at the bottom of the stairs is removed. Anything else?
Good. Now, question number one is, can you live with that? You know, those conditions that we, we imply, if, if they can't be, you know, they're not reasonable to you, then you can certainly withdraw your application without prejudice and then resubmit, but if you think you can, you can live with those conditions, we're good.
I think you're fantastic on through, thank you for working with us.
Alright, so I have a, a motion then, uh, that's been seconded with, with conditions. Alana, you wanna read them back, please? The conditions?
Yep, to keep the five-foot opening on the first floor open.
Yep.
On the first floor room off the entry, room number zero zero two designated a shared living space, and the door at the bottom of the stair will be removed.
Okay. So there's a motion with those three conditions, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept petition number nine oh eight with conditions. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes five, zero to zero.
Thank you.
Uh, Alana will give you all that, yeah?
Okay.
You'll have to get a, or you'll have the paperwork signed by here, I believe there's a twenty-day waiting period. And then you'll bring that down to the registry of deeds and register, with the registry of deeds, and then you'll be good to go.
Awesome, thank you guys.
Alana will explain it all through, she's really good like that.
Thank you so much.
She's the brains of the outfit.
If I ask about the other extensions, put the bedroom downstairs, is that approved by you, or if you have a. The operations that we're putting in?
The building permit will probably.
Yeah, we're fine with the petitions and how it's all set up. The file of permit is on.
Yeah, to go to the planning board, then, actually, if you use that as a sewing room, reading room, then it wouldn't be considered a bedroom, it may affect the requirements for the septic system.
Okay.
You know, or give you a little alleviate here.
Can I just ask you guys one quick question? I know it's late, I don't wanna keep you, but, um, if, we don't plan on selling this house, but life happens. If it, down the road, we did decide to ever sell the house, and we wanted it, though, that second bedroom is still be a second bedroom, is that, is that like a super complicated issue? Do you know what I mean?
You wouldn't be selling it as an in-law apartment.
You'd be selling it as the in-law.
You'd just be selling it as a.
Okay, okay, perfect. I mean, I don't plan on moving, it took me this long to get myself in my house, so I don't wanna go anywhere, but, um, just curious. Thank you guys so much, we really appreciate you working with us.
Yeah, give her a call in the morning, she'll walk you through all the regen.
Have a good night, guys.
Thank you. Appreciate it, thank you, man.
Do we have a direct number for you?
It's eight thirty. Did you say eight thirty?
You did.
Yeah, just called so they're gonna press.
I'll go to wait.
I thought we still had two more.
No, stop. Alright, let's do our correspondence and get the hell out of here. Correspondence emails, bills, Clinton Express, bills, bills, bills. Bills, bills. Signature authority fiscal year two thousand twenty. Did Alana get all of them? Are we all signed? There was only one or two we were missing.
Yeah, uh, that was for, what?
The signature authorization.
Yes, we signed it.
Yeah, right?
Other business amended comprehensive permit rules and regulations and applicant checklist. Sexual harassment policy signature sheet, have we done that? You guys make me feel so dirty, crazy.
What's the, what's the policy?
Do we need to, is there like a, an acceptance signature or something? Alana, is there an acceptance signature or something we need on the, yeah, the signature sheet on the sexual harassment policy?
The jokes.
Yeah, I know, you just, you just can't go, can't even think about it, you know? You're gonna burn in hell, Dan, just saying. You still working crazy?
Pretty good, starting to slow down a little bit.
Is it?
Yeah, I think I got four set of hospitals last month, that's why I wasn't.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, crazy, crazy stint there with inmates.
Damn.
And I think you have to actually, um, make a motion and continue those other two.
Oh, yeah, I thought I did that, no? Okay, we have two other pieces of business here. We had petition number nine oh two, David A. Rotis slash Gold Contracting, two ninety-two Thompson Streets, special permit to build an in-law. Uh, that was, uh, requested, we have a letter here requesting to postpone until next month, November fourth. So do I have a motion to continue petition number nine oh two until the, uh, November fourth meeting?
Motion to continue nine oh two to November fourth.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, motion to continue nine oh two until next month, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Five, zero, zero. And now, uh, petition number nine hundred, Green Apple Farms, zero and two forty-one Franklin Street, variance for access via different location. Applicants request to extend to, uh, November fourth, two thousand nineteen, received on ten, seven, nineteen, should be in here. So I need a, a motion to accept the request to continue petition number nine, zero, zero until, uh, November fourth, two thousand nineteen.
Make a motion to, uh, extend petition nine hundred to November fourth.
As requested?
Petition nine hundred to November fourth, as requested.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion on the floor to, uh, uh, accept the request to extend petition number nine, zero, zero, Green Apple Farms, uh, zero and two forty-one Franklin Street. Uh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Five, zero, zero. And that concludes our meeting. What else do we have, Alana? The old colony, we have some.
Bills, mail.
We did the bills.
And then the comprehensive.
Copy.
That really long.
Oh, this thing, oh.
Okay. So any of you guys can go through all of that?
Thank you.
Anything new on, uh, on anything else? Brooks and, uh, Dresnis, Drensis, Alana, we good with that?
All good.
Alright. Okay, how about, uh, a motion to adjourn?
We can adjourn.
What? What do we have to do with that? So we just have to read that over?
Yeah, and then Charlie said that you have to actually approve the amended version of it, so that it can be used going forward.
What's, what's the amendment?
Should be on the left side of your document.
Are the amendments, the comments, like the, the gray areas?
Yep, exactly, for my turn-in question.
So the one stapled, Article twenty-one, that's the amended one?
No, no, I think these are the amendments in here, like the gray areas, right?
That, yeah, that whole thing.
Like this? Yeah. But the changes are in gray, right?
Yeah, on the right side, yep, and I didn't break it.
And Burt's comments here that you can't do?
I think they're taking that out.
You're taking it out, okay.
Right?
Yeah. That should be removed.
Yes, I went through this one.
I did too, there's another section that's.
About four times, I get almost through it now.
You're a better man.
It is some riveting reading, though, isn't it? Trying to show.
Jerry, what do you think?
I read it and it's, it sounds okay, I think.
Pretty standard?
Yep.
Alright, does the board wanna, uh, make a motion to accept the, uh, rules and regulations for comprehensive permit as proposed changes?
I'll make a motion to accept the changes and amendments to the rules and regulations for the comprehensive permit.
As submitted?
As submitted.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Set a call for voice vote. All those in favor? Mr. Nazarella?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Burt, yes. Robert?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
And how do you feel, Daniel?
I don't have to vote.
I know you don't have to. But I wanna drag you down.
It's a secret.
I, I read through, I think it's fine.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate your opinion. Alright, what else do we have, Alana? Are you sure? Okay. Uh, how about a motion to adjourn, gentlemen?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion to adjourn, all those in favor say aye?
I'd be a jerner, the chief.
Aye?
Aye.